This conference will now be recorded.
Kate, I'd like to call the village board to order roll call, please. President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Yep.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
And Trustee Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge is that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women in uniform throughout the world. Thank you. Okay, I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the open and closed minutes from September 26, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. You're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to talk about anything not on the agenda? Anybody that's wanting to talk about anything not on the agenda? Hearing none. Moving forward. Seven, written communications or announcements. I don't have any.
I have one announcement. I just want to congratulate Chris Zerbal for being appointed to county board, and thank you for doing that. It's nice to have a representative from the village board serving on the county board as well.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, number eight. This is the fun part. We have oath of office for our two new officers. Chief?
Get set up. I have these microphones out here. Okay. Appreciate everyone being here. Appreciate the board allowing me to introduce our new officers. We have two new officers that have just completed their FTO program, although they are fairly new. They are senior enough to already have technically three people underneath them, so we're ready to go. Appreciate the media being here, too, for this. So it's very nice of you to come. First, I'd like to introduce Bradley Katuria. Come on up. Brad knew what he wanted to do in life, because he graduated from Pulaski High School in 2021 and went right into the Law Enforcement Academy. He graduated in May of 2023 and was named Student of the Year. So, well done, young man, Student of the Year. You bet. Before being hired as a public safety officer, Brad was a cadet with the Brown County Sheriff's Office and worked security with NWTC. So Brad has been with us, as I said, completed the FTO program, and he's now on solo patrol on nights. So I'll kind of make this efficient. I'm going to have Victor come up next. Victor? Victor is from Ashwabhanan, graduated Ashwabhanan High School. He, too, was pretty confident what he wanted to do. He took a two-year stint at UWGB and kind of found himself there, and then went into the Law Enforcement Academy at NWTC as well. He also graduated May in 2023. He also was a community service officer for DePere Police Department and a part-time police officer for Black Creek Police Department. Correct? We got it. All right. Let's do your oath of office first, and then we'll do your badge pinning, all right? So let me get your microphones, because everybody online's got to be able to hear us, too. There's yours, sir. We'll set these out so you can sign them when we're done. There we go. There's yours. Put those in your left hand so you can raise your right hand. All right? Repeat after me. I'm not going to raise my right hand, though, so. All right, raise your right hand. Thank you. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Victor.
Bradley Katuria. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
To the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
This is a tricky one. And I will well.
And I will well.
Got it. And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of public safety officer.
The duties of office of public safety officer.
For the village of Ashwabhanan.
For the village of Ashwabhanan.
Acting to the best of my ability.
Acting to the best of my ability.
Well done. Congratulations. Now, we will have Brad's sister Kate and Victor's brother Kevin come up and do the badge pinning. Now, I say this every time. There's no pressure here, all right? Just don't hurt them.
If there's blood, we have paramedics in the back.
Nice. All right. Sign your respective oath there. That's yours to keep, sir. And that's yours to keep. Thank you again. Welcome. We look forward to watching you guys grow. They're already doing a great job for us, so it's my pleasure to introduce them to all of you, so thank you very much.
Welcome, gentlemen. Glad you're here. Okay, now, number nine, a presentation. Update on the Ashwabhanan Performing Arts Center by Keith Lucius and Kate Williams of the Ashwabhanan School District.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
Could you state your name and address for the record, just for the record, so that it's.
Myself?
Everybody. Yeah, both of you.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm Kate Williams. I'm at 2720 Auto Court in Ashwabhanan.
Keith Lucius, 2946 Foxford Drive, Ashwabhanan.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's great to be here. I'll kick us off.
Okay.
Annually, we want to give the board an update on what's happening with the Performing Arts Center, because it's a collaborative cooperative agreement between the village and the school district. The school district is the fiscal agent on this, so I'm here to answer any questions you have on the financials. Hopefully, you got those ahead of time, but you can always ask at any time if you have questions. I'm going to give you just a quick one number that I think is worth noting off of the financials. It's very consistent with what we've had the last couple of years. Very good financial year. Things seem to be going very well. The number that kind of jumps out is the fund balance that you see at the bottom of the page, where we're up over $400,000 in fund balance. And what I would anticipate, if I were sitting in your chair, the question of what's that money intended for? Why do we have a fund balance like that? And I think it's an important thing that the community needs to know and all of you need to know. We've built the fund balance up because as we are getting close to 10 years in that building, we are seeing the maintenance needs continue to increase. So we're trying to build some reserves, so we are ready for those maintenance needs as things need to be replaced. So we don't have to, Kate doesn't have to go back to the school board or the village board to try to secure funding. Kate has instituted a facility fee as part of the ticket prices, and we're putting, that's contributing to it. Plus, because we've been efficient running the operations, and Kate's done such a great job financially running the operation, we've been able to build that fund balance up. So the goal is that we don't have to come back to either board for maintenance or repairs or replacement of things as the facility starts to age a little bit. That's going to happen, and we wanted to build some reserves to do that. I do anticipate this being about where we keep the fund balance. So in future years, I think we'll be fairly stable unless we have a year of needs, but I just want, that's the number that if I were in your seat, I would be the most questioning what it's for, what the intention was. So with that, I will see if you have any financial questions, and then we'll hand it over to Kate to talk about all the great things happening there.
That was going to be my question, Keith, was where is the $432,000? You know, we're going through budget right now, and we comment all the time, all the different services that the village shares with the school district, school district shares with the village. And when I go to my conferences, it's not like that all over. So I thank the school district for that, and I thank village staff for that also.
And the school district feels the same way. It's so awesome to have a great partner. We truly all are working together for the community, and it's not about the district or the village. It's about us working together to help the community, and we appreciate that partnership and how well we've worked together in so many areas.
Okay. Kate, it's your show now, Kate.
Well, to add on the commentary about the fund balance, the other thing that is important to keep adding to that balance for, not to leave it as a balance for spending. So you think about a performing arts center. It has a tremendous amount of technology inside of it, right? We're talking about state-of-the-art lighting, sound, equipment. And so keeping those things up to date. Think of how often you update your cell phone. Some of us are doing it every couple of years. So as Keith said, as we age as a venue, some of those expenses are going to come up to keep things up to date and going. But I did want to go over, I know in your packets you had the financials since we've opened, so starting with that first year in 2017, that's a lot to digest. So I created a summary sheet just to kind of point out a couple of key things that I want to talk about. Our usages at the PAC have increased year over year, with the exception of COVID, of the COVID year. And last season, we saw over 46,000 people come through that building. And so, again, it's a great testament to the vision that the school district and the village had for this space to serve not only the school district but the community at large. If anything, we've got enough usage where we could probably create another one of these, should we be so inclined. So it's a good problem to have. We are, as far as usage goes, it's a common question I get, because we serve the Ashwabhanan School District, how much of the usage in the building is done by the school. The great thing is that the students love that space. They love being in it to perform, rehearse, practice. And so we have a lot of usage from the Ashwabhanan School District in there. So last season, we had 74% of our usage was by the school district. The other usages were from community rentals and then the events that I book as part of that performing arts season. The reason I want to point that out is, again, we have a very unique dynamic financially with that space, and we knew that going into it. But because we're serving our students, those are, I'm going to say that those are the dollars that, those are things that do not have an income component related to them when we're serving the students. So last season, as the example, you know, 26% of our usages equated to 100% of our earned revenues for the space. So considering that dynamic, we really are doing a great job financially, being fiscally responsible, and making sure that we are in the black. We are able to create these fund balances and continue to grow. With our growth, though, I will say that we have a staff of two, and that has been great up to this point. But to have 307 usages of the building each year with a staff of two, one being our technical director, it gets very difficult for us to balance our time. We are not going to continue to work every night and weekend of our lives. It's just unsustainable. And while there's a great amount of pride, and that's why we've done it to this point, there needs to be a decision made between either we cut back on the amount of programming, so that we can stick with our staff of two and make things operate as they are, or we invest in additional staff so that we can maintain and grow the level of activity that's at the venue. I think it's a good problem to be at. It's not a problem. It's just a discussion point. And so what I see as being something that would be realistic in moving forward would be to have an additional technical staff person on the books. Right now, if our technical director gets sick, we don't have anybody. We are in a bind of trying to find somebody last minute. But it's also balancing those hours so that they're not there every single day. Right now, we're programming, I'm programming the venue based on staff availability. So there may be times where I have to say, man, we've been here 12-hour days, eight days in a row. I got to take a break. My tech director's got to take a break. We need a quiet day. So if we had an additional staff person, we could be filling more of those vacant dates. So something to consider down the road as far as, the other additional would be a part-time front-of-house manager that would help manage that front. We have a wonderful group of 100 volunteers that volunteer their time to be our ticket takers, our greeters, our ushers. They help you to go to your seats, but somebody who helps with scheduling those people and also manages that front of the building so that when people are coming in, there's always somebody making sure that everything is okay. So, again, rotation of staff so that we can keep operating at our great level and growing that amount as well. So, and, yeah, I've added in there, you know, not only are ticket sales great, but those shows that we have coming in that I'm booking are what allows us to raise funds. So whether it be grants or donations in the form of sponsorships, but since you brought me on board, I've raised almost $390,000 just in donations for the center. So we've got a lot of great things going on. Just really pleased with how things are going. We've been in the black every year except for COVID, but sometimes you can't control everything. And we have a brand-new season announcement out there, so tickets go on sale tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m., so please buy. Any questions?
Kate, when do you envision adding another person? I mean, are you talking next year, a couple of years out? What are your thoughts on that?
My vision would be as soon as possible, but, to be candid with you, we really are at max capacity right now. I do have concerns about coming into this next season with the level of staffing that we're at. I did not book as many shows in the performing arts season this year as I have in previous years, because I've learned that it's not sustainable, and it's still going to be tight. Again, it's wonderful that we have so many users of this space that want to be in there, and it's hard to say no to any of them, because we can't support them with labor when there's space available on the calendar for them to be in there. And I don't mean paying groups. I mean students, too. And I don't like being in that position, so I want us to be able to support all the users that do want to be in there.
But Tracy, I want to add to that. As a district, we're looking at our usage and trying to give Kate the ability to say no or to look at what other space can students use for maybe some of the practices and rehearsals, and then only use the space, maybe one or two rehearsals before performances, and try to reduce that, to take some of that stress off. So we are looking at both sides of it, so it's not just the community performance side that's taking, being tightened. We're trying to tighten both and give Kate the ability to say, no, this is what our limit is, and make our leaders all know that just because it's open, and just because there isn't something scheduled, doesn't mean it's open for use, because if we could, our buildings would use every minute of it, and we've got to put the right bumpers in place so they know that.
Is that pretty consistent, the usage over the years that you show here in 2022, 23?
Last year's usage, as far as how much the school's using it.
Right.
It was the highest last year. Usually, but usually it's around 67%. So it is, it's been higher. It's, Keith is absolutely right. We're working on that. But at the end of the day, it's hard to say no when the stu, it would be nice to be able to use it every minute of the day that it is available, and it's, we're limited by staffing right now.
And we want to get community members in, including parents and grandparents of our students for those performances. They want to see those performances in this awesome PAC. So it's a trade-off, but we're trying to make those decisions and reduce that non-performance usage that the district's doing.
Keith, are you putting anything in your budget then for next year to add staff or start to build the funding to add staff?
Yes. Actually, some of that fund balance is intended so that we could cover, and this year, we had to do some things to make sure we were covering what we needed there. So yes, our budget has some money. As we set our, our school board will set the levy tomorrow, but that is included in the levy that they'll be setting to help cover that and have a share of that staff or provide for that staff.
Are you also looking for the village, then, to help support some of that?
That is our thought right now. We've been very collaborative on sharing the ongoing staffing, but like I said, we want to constrict the district usage so the villages and the communities getting their time in the PAC. But that's our thought right now. We've talked with Mary and Joel about meeting to kind of talk a little more about what the plan is before decisions are made. So it is, you know, both the village and the school district are having their input into those decisions before anything's made.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Kate, how is this year turning out so far? Because I notice, you know, as of 10, 15, 23, numbers aren't tracking what past years have, not even close. Is that because you're not really selling tickets?
Because we don't go on sale until tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. But a very good question. I foresee us being on track to previous years, so I'm not, I don't want to jinx anything, but I'm not concerned. Yeah.
Is that because of cutting back on a couple of performances?
Yes.
The numbers you have right now?
No, it really doesn't matter. It's mainly because the numbers aren't in yet from, we don't have anything on sale. You know, most activity kicks off in November, December, and then our most active months are next spring, when really all the attendance numbers comes in, come in. A lot of that is school-related. You get to the end of the school year, and everybody's got a band concert, a choir concert, a musical, an end-of-year something, you know? So we've got a lot of the school usage, too. But we also have, a lot of our renters are coming in in May with dance recitals and the like. So, good question.
Okay. Any other questions for Kate and Keith?
You reach out anytime if you think of something after tonight.
Okay. I know we'll be having a meeting.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'm sure I'll see you, too.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number 10, action on the consent agenda. Change of Agent QuickTrip Inc., DBA QuickTrip 1270 Susan Fuller. Change of Agent Kohler Company DBA Lodge, Kohler, Eric Newton. Consider/Discuss/Act on the Distribution of State Required Housing Fee and Housing Affordability Reports, Budgeted Expenditures, General Fund Financial Reports, September 23, 2023 Year to Date, the Investment Report, Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department Reports, and Public Works Monthly Department Report. If anybody wants anything pulled, otherwise I need a motion to approve.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Number 11, public hearing on a planned unit development. PUD Ordinance Number 010-1-23, request by Ingberg Anderson Architects for a new active adult apartment building and branch library, the Promenade, located at 2305 San Louis Place, Parcel VA-99-5. Erin?
Okay. The requested planned unit development, or PUD, public hearing is as discussed for the Promenade, which is a mixed-use development consisting of active adult apartments, as well as a new branch library for the village of Ashwabhanan by Brown County. There's additional small mixed-use property in there, as well as small cafe, things like that. So this is a redevelopment of the former San Louis Manor Nursing Home property. The property is in the process of being razed in anticipation of construction starting soon.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to speak for or against this project? Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this project? One more time. Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this project? Need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So I move.
Second. Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, number 12, action items. Consider/Discuss/Act on a Planned Unit Development, PUD Ordinance Number 010-1-23, request by Ingberg Anderson Architects for a new active adult apartment building and branch library, the Promenade, located at 2305 San Louis Place, Parcel VA-99-5. Erin?
All right. Thank you. I will bring up a display of the property. What you see here is an overall site plan of the proposed development. To the north is Cormier Road. To the west is San Louis Place. To the east is Mission Barbecue, other restaurants fronting on O'Naita Street, and to the south, our number of smaller office buildings and the use. As depicted in the site plan, there is one proposed access point to Cormier Road, right here, with off-street parking servicing the library and visitors to the active adult apartment building. You see a drop-off area right here, drive-through drop-off area. They do have some exterior amenities, including a pool, small amphitheater, pollinator gardens, two pickleball courts, which we understand is a big selling point, as well as a grilling patio area, so forth. The library would be located here in the north end of the property, in this area as identified. Continuing through the property, as the property actually has a pretty good grade to it from east to west, the first floor is actually a parking garage that is built into the hill. So it is at grade parking with the library right here in this peach or pink color. Again, moving on, you see here the first, I guess, first true floor of the apartment building for active adults. This is open to the library floor. It is not a second-floor library. It is just a open area that's open to the second story. Again, number of one and two-bedroom active adult apartment buildings, or apartment units, floor plates, for the total of five stories. The, as it is built into the grade of the hill, the PUD does request a increase in the allowable height from 36 feet to 75 feet. The 75 feet should be noted as at grade on the east side of the property, close to the parking lot. As one continues to the west, it gets up to around 50 feet from grade, again, because of that slope, as it continues to increase in height further to the west. Exterior materials consist, consistent with our site plan design review requirements include fiberglass window assemblies, aluminum balconies, masonry veneer, quarry stone veneer, board-form concrete, and two types of system wall cladding with concealed fasteners. Masonry veneer, quarry stone veneer, and board-form concrete are utilized in our first floor to meet the mason requirements under the village's requirements. Also, rooftop units are proposed to be concealed, consistent with our code. In terms of pedestrian access, let's go back to the overall site. We do have sidewalks wrapping around the entire site, internal sidewalks connecting right here through the building, connecting to the east. We do have a series of bike locations, bicycle parking locations in the southwest, south-central, as well as by the library and by the, I believe it's called a Passagio, if I got that correct, Tim. The, in terms of the planned unit development, there are a series of objectives, as identified in the document. I trust you had a chance to read through those, as well as a site plan review approval objectives, identifies how the proposed project meets those selected objectives. In terms of recommended conditions of approval, there are a few. Just bear with me as I read through those for the record. Screen any rooftop or ground-mounted mechanically units visible from the property boundaries or public right-of-way. Verify there's an accessible route in addition to the exterior monumental stair in order to access the patio seating, coffee shop, and other amenities on Level 1 from the parking lot, and I believe that has already been discussed with our building inspector. There is a catch-all. Meet all applicable requirements of the Ashwabhanon Site Plan Review, 172200, all the applicable village ordinances. From engineering, coordinate sewer connection in Cormier Road with village utility supervisor. In terms of stormwater, revise a stormwater report, Page 3, Dutchman Creek watershed, not the Fox River. 52% total suspended solid or TSS is required to meet the. 52% total suspended solid or TSS is required to meet the total maximum daily load or TMDL, not 40% as indicated on Page 4. It is, there's the typo regarding Eshwabonan and not Whitewater. Include a flat swale sloped to the east along the south property line. Support discharge from bioretention storm sewer outfall does not create an issue with neighboring building. From public safety, coordinate with public safety regarding exact location of FDC or Fire Department connection and connection diameters. And also contact public safety to determine Knox Box location near the main entrance and secondary location near the FDC. From forestry, the landscape plan provided is conceptual in nature. Please submit a finalized landscape plan for additional review. And then there are overhead primary electrical lines in the right-of-way along both Cormier and San Louis. Please ensure that tree plantings near them will not interfere with the wires when the trees reach full maturity. From Bike and Ped, ensure the proposed bicycle parking facilities meet the standards of the Association of Pedestrian and Bicycle Professionals. I did have a couple additional comments from Bike and Ped come in here a little bit late. Request for installation of a stop sign at the exit of the garage to make sure people watch for pedestrians in that area. And then just a note to coordinate with Public Works internally regarding the installation of a painted crosswalk and push button on the stoplight at the east leg of Cormier and San Louis intersection. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, the development team is also in the audience for any questions you may have for them.
I will be abstaining from any discussion or voting on this action item.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Being on the Site Plan Committee, Erin did a good job in putting this together to meet all of our regulations within the village. The project itself is very, very unique, having it with the county and the people that are building it for the convenience of the library and of it, which they've been looking for for some time. So if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve this project as presented.
I'll second.
With the staff conditions.
And a second is okay with the staff condition?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the site plan request for the new active adult apartment building and branch library at 2305 San Louis Place. Any more comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. One abstention. Thank you. Beautiful building, Tim. Mariana. Okay, 12B, Consider Discuss Act on a Site Plan Review Request by Robert E. Lee and Associates for a new four-story Cambria Hotel located at 2113 to 2145 South O'naita Street. Parcels VA-67-A-8, VA-67-A, VA-460-P-108, and VA-90-4-11. Erin?
All right, thank you. I'll share my screen again to bring up the renderings. All right, so here's the overall site plan of the proposed Cambria Hotel. On the top of the screen is O'naita Street. Here is Element Way. So north would actually be to the right of the property. West, east, and south, of course. The site plan review is for the site plan itself. The site does have approval for a planned unit development to allow for a minimum of 122 parking stalls, as well as maximum height allowing for the four-story development, which is 58 feet. In terms of the site itself, you see it fronting here on O'naita Street. The slight L shape right here was added to accommodate the total 100 rooms that were planned with the five stories. Again, that was reduced to four stories, and that was added to accommodate that. In terms of access to the site, there are currently, I believe, five total access driveways onto O'naita Street from this property. It is proposed to be reduced to three, two of which are primary access points. The one here really is for utility services for refuse pickup, as well as emergency access. Primary entrance and drop-off right here with secondary exit to O'naita Street right here. There's also an entrance exit to Element Way, as you see right here. In terms of the property and the design, get to that here. What you see here are the exterior renderings of the building, again, four-story. In terms of the materials, includes aluminum storefront window glazing, adhered stone, thin brick, architectural wall panels with concealed fasteners. Again, we have to do masonry on the first floor, consistent with our requirement in our code. The site plan, staff report does include a series of objectives for both the PUD that were subject to that, as well as the site plan review approval objectives, which I trust you had a chance to read through prior to the meeting. In terms of the recommended conditions of approval, I'll read through those for the record. As the building is greater than 50 feet tall and with an airport zoning District C, the applicant must obtain an application for a height permit and approval from the Green Bay Austin Straddle Airport Director. Submit of a lighting plan with cut sheet and proposed light fixture documentation that has been submitted. Recordation of a certified survey map to remove any parcel lines from going through the building or located within any setback areas. Number four, meet all applicable requirements of the Eshwabonan Site Plan Review 172200 and all other applicable village ordinances. From engineering, coordinate lateral abandonment, water and new lateral installation, water, storm, hydrant, relocate in the road right-of-way with the Village Utility Supervisor. Remove the wide concrete apron on Element Way as shown on the demolition plan and replace with standard barrier curb and restore terrace area to grass except in location of the proposed driveway. Coordinate all driveway curb cut work on O'naita Street or South O'naita Street with Brown County Highway Department. From stormwater, submit a stormwater management plan to the village engineer for review and verify existing site drainage routes. From public safety, coordinate with public safety regarding exact location of the FDC or Fire Department connection and connection diameters. Contact public safety to determine Knox Box location near the main entrance and secondary location near the FDC. From forestry, please verify that the large maturing trees, streamen maple, hackberry, honey locust, and sycamore are used will not interfere with parking lot lighting located in the interior parking lot islands. If so, please consider using a small maturing species such as Japanese tree lilac or flowering crab. From bicycle and pedestrian committee, reposition the bike parking, meeting the standards of the Association of Pedestrian and Bicycle Professionals near the main entrance in a more visible and secure location. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, the development team is also in the audience. Do you have any questions for them? And actually, I'll probably hand it off to Joel for the kind of follow-up on a few things.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to Erin's comments in relation to this particular project as a reminder to the board that this site plan, the approval of this site plan is a condition of the planned unit development district ordinance that was passed by the board previous that attested to the height relief that is being provided for this particular project, as well as the additional parking requirements. With that being said, this particular site plan has the ability to be scrutinized and have a little higher degree of discernment from the board as it relates to the PUD. With that, I think staff has done an exceptional job of scrutinizing the development and has certainly found a basis for approval as it's being presented tonight. However, I also understand in speaking with individual members of the board that there may be a desire to provide additional input into the overall site plan to get it to be, have a higher degree of consistency with some of the urban design guidelines that have been established by the village. So with that being said, I just wanted to add that I think the board really has ultimately three options. Certainly, there could be more, but three readily available options at its disposal tonight based on that conversation. One, you certainly could move to approve the site plan as it's being presented with the conditions identified by staff. Two, I think it's certainly possible that there may be design elements that the board would like to have the developer consider to bring it more consistent to the design guidelines that are wanting to be achieved by the board. So in doing so, maybe postponing action on the site plan tonight, but by doing so, giving direction to the developer to correct the items that the board desires that would bring that consistency to the site plan for its next meeting in November. Third, if there are substantial changes to the site plan that the board desires, maybe building configuration layouts, things of that nature, more substantive in nature, it certainly would be permissible to forward or refer this matter back through the committee, Site Plan Review Committee, Plan Commission, and have them also scrutinized. But with that being said, I would certainly provide for the, if the board desires to do that, provide very specific directions as to which elements are desired by the board. So both Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission have those directives as they begin reviewing that process. So with that, again, three easily identical objectives that can be achieved by the board that I think are certainly reasonable based on the desires that the board would like to achieve tonight.
Okay.
Erin, as this passed through, as this passed through the committees that it has gone through, this meets all of our urban design policies we have along with all of the ordinances pertaining to the structure of the building and how it meets the codes that we do have. Am I correct?
Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission did recommend approval. And based upon the staff report, it's certainly my understanding that the proposed site plan does meet the Site Plan Review ordinance as laid out in our zoning code.
With that being said, I know that there's been some desire to tweak the plan, I'm going to say, a bit. So I wouldn't have a problem postponing this one month and tweak the plan to get it exactly where we want it. You know, this was a very close vote on the actual height issue. The height issue has been established. The developers have been asked by the residents, you know, they didn't want the four stories of bedroom windows along O'naita Street. So they did a great job in doing that. But there are a few things that, in my mind, they could tweak. So I wouldn't have a problem with postponing it for a month.
Well, I kind of disagree with that because the citizens in that area came in front of us and gave us their concerns on what they wanted. And they have met those concerns. As you can see, there's, I'll point you, there's two people here, three people, that live in the area. And if this was a big concern, you'd see a whole lot more people here. Now, we had one letter from the people in the apartment against it, and then after we presented it, she approved it. You know, we've been, I just can't see dragging this on any longer to redesign it to, who's coming across and saying they want this changed? I mean, why are we going through this? I think it's fine the way it is. It's met all of the ordinances and urban designs. The people, we pleased them. What are we, what are we trying to achieve here? Change people's minds? And let's say we turn the building, now they're going to look at these, all these bedrooms on O'naita Street. That's what we were trying to get away from.
Right. I'm not saying a substantive change, Gary. I'm saying some tweaking within the site plan. Minor tweaks in the site plan so that everybody can be on board with it. So that's just my comment, but we'll see where it goes.
All right.
I would agree with Mary, and I made the motion at the last meeting to deny the PUD. The concerns that I have that I see that it doesn't fit really with the urban design guidelines or may be able to be tweaked a bit is some of the building orientation, the placement of the bike racks, which is an easy switch. Pedestrian access from Element Way, it's just not there. Vehicular access onto O'naita Street, Jay had mentioned that, I think, Plan Commission about his concern of the traffic onto O'naita Street. I think that needs to be looked at. Too many access points onto O'naita Street. The human design for this facility and what our guidelines call for in this area is just not there. You know, specifically access, again, from Element Way and O'naita Street. The location of the parking, our ordinances talk about not putting parking in the front, not putting parking on a corner. There's just a lack of a buffer along O'naita Street to make, again, this a really nice design. The other thing I guess I'm concerned about is the PUD and site plan coordination, making sure that they're consistent and that things are addressed in both of those documents. So I would like to see this be postponed at this time and some of those issues be looked at between staff, the developer, and see if we can come up with some, like Mary said, maybe some tweaks to it that'll make it a better design, a design that I think fits into this area better. So that, those are my concerns on it. And I don't know if anybody else has any other concerns on the design or things that we could give that would help staff work with the developer to see if we can tweak some of those things.
Tracy, I pretty much agree with most of the stuff you said there. It'd be hard to reconfigure the parking without making dramatic changes.
Right.
But some of the other stuff, the driveway access and the pedestrian traffic on Element Way, we need to make sure we get this right. You know, we got one shot at it. It's a big project. I think I would support delaying it.
So I mean, I would make a motion to postpone action on the site plan and have the developer return next month to Village Board with a revised site plan, addressing the items identified, and again, if there's other items people have. And also to include an amended PUD that aligns with the revised site plan for Village Board consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, so let me ask you this, Tracy. With your motion, are you asking for a tweaks to the site plan or a total reconfiguration of the site plan? Because that's
Wait, I think it needs
Two different things.
It is two different things. I think it needs tweaks, but we also have to look at our ordinance that we have set and make sure it meets our guidelines too.
So you are asking for a total reconfiguration?
I would say looking at how the building is oriented, make sure there's access from O'naita Street safely and easily, and looking at all the elements I just said. So I would say it's tweaks. I don't know if the whole building needs to be relocated, but I think the site itself needs some tweaks, if that's clear enough.
Okay. So that, that to me seems more like a reconfiguration of the building, not just a few tweaks.
Well, yeah, if I could, just for clarification purposes, obviously, staff is going to be working with the development team and crafting whatever modifications are necessary to meet the satisfaction of the board and the amended PUD. What I'm hearing is there may be an opportunity to restrict one of the driveways or curb cuts on O'naita Street. Relocation of the bicycle rack, which is a pretty easy fix. In fact, that was recommended as a staff condition anyhow. A better defined pedestrian way from Element to the primary entrance of the building. I'm hearing also maybe access to maybe the restaurant or some of the front house end of the hotel from O'naita Street to some regard, just to kind of bring that human scale to it. I have not heard specifically that we are looking to reorientate the building from its present location over to, as maybe had been suggested by other residents or stakeholders in the area, to, let's say, the south side of the lot or in a different location. Or I'm certainly not hearing reorientating the building where sleeping rooms are being visible along O'naita Street. That is not what I'm hearing yet. However, if it is, then, you know, that's certainly something we would want to know as staff as we have those conversations with the development team.
Okay, so you're talking just about those five Okay, so you're talking just about those five elements that you brought up. The pedestrian access, the sidewalk, or the bicycle rack and that type of stuff. We're not talking reconfiguring the building on the site.
I would say no, in my opinion, not to reconfigure the whole building. I think we need to look at the things that Joel just reiterated and make sure it's going to be accessible to all and meet as much as it can our urban design guidelines.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we'd want to go back to the reconfiguration of the building because that's where we went and the residents basically
We are going to create another third world if we're going to do stuff like that.
Correct.
We worked hard with the residents in that area to get it to their satisfaction. And a driveway change here or the traffic you're talking about, whatever you're going to put on Oneida Street is going to create traffic. And without traffic, you don't have no business. So you got to put up with the traffic. Now, we do have a problem there, and I know it's a speed trap from Morse to Cormier. That's the longest stretch in that road that does not have any signals. So we're going to get, we got, but we're working, hopefully, we can do something about that. But I, I disagree on some of the things you're saying, that I think they're simple fixes that don't need to hold up another month.
I think if, on the traffic, you know, we, from my experiences in trying to cross Oneida Street and that, and then with the Element Way buildings opening, it's going to even get worse, we, I would be asking staff to be sending a letter to the county that we, as the Village Board, could be signing, asking them to look at that corridor because I believe there needs to be additional stoplights put on there, specifically Marvell Lane and also Mike McCarthy Way.
I don't have a problem with that, Jay. I don't think the residents are going to have a problem with that either. That's their concern.
Now, that doesn't, that's really up and above this. That's something completely sidetracked from this. With this particular project, Aaron, you had mentioned about the lighting and that there's definitely concern about the lighting. That would be something. And then with the noise, I would really like to see specific signage put on outdoor areas that would, kind of like if you go to a campground and they say quiet hours or certain time and state the ordinance so that anybody that would be using any exterior areas would actually see that, hey, you know, and just use our, our current ordinance, our noise ordinance, and, but make sure that the signage to those areas also reflects that. That's something I would like to see as a condition, Aaron, put in as well.
Okay.
I mean, I, to look at, I, I guess I don't disagree with anybody, anything that's been stated. I understand what Gary's, what Gary's saying, but I also understand if there's a few things that we can tweak and make the project better. Okay, then it's, we're talking 30 days. And I recognize you guys have been through a lot, you've worked through a lot, but to get everything buttoned up, I don't know that another 30 days is, is going to be killer to you.
Okay. So we have, we have a motion and a second, but before I take a vote, what I'd like to do is ask anybody if they'd like to open the floor because we probably have people that would like to move to open the floor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. You'd like to come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Bill Woodward. My address is 300 North Broadway, Suite 2B in Green Bay. I'm an attorney. I represent the property owners and the developers. I, I do believe that we have submitted a plan that does meet all of your ordinance requirements. We've worked very hard with staff to come up with a plan that does meet the ordinances. And I guess I have a concern about delaying a vote based upon tweaking something. I mean, either it meets it or it doesn't. And at site plan approval, our site plan either meets your requirements or it doesn't. And I think that what we have presented does meet your ordinance requirements. And that, that, you know, my concern is what happens in 30 days? Is there more tweaking and more tweaking, more tweaking? And by the way, my client's on a timeframe here. Time is actually money. And, and just allowing this thing to continue to drag on month after month with no real end in sight. If there's something specific in your ordinance that we are not meeting, tell us. We believe that everything that we've presented does meet your ordinance. And we've worked with staff, like I've said, to, to, to design a building that meets all of those things. It may not be perfect from everybody's standpoint, but no project meets everybody's desires. And we've worked with neighbors, we've worked with staff, we've come up with a proposal, we got the PUD, and now we've submitted a site plan that nobody said, I haven't, we haven't heard that anything that we presented doesn't meet your ordinance. If there is, I'd like to hear about it. But tweaking something leaves it way too, way too open. If there's something in particular that doesn't meet your ordinance, then I'd like to know what that is now as opposed to just delaying it and then having an open-ended meeting again. Because I believe what's on the table is we're going to just adjourn it for 30 days to come back to fix what? I, I, I don't know. We're here, we have the ability to answer any questions, to address any concerns, but I, I'm, my, my concern is that it's very open-ended right now.
Well, I think the project, with all respect, I think the project meets the zoning requirements. I, I do agree with you, counsel, and that, but I, I think it's been established from the board making a record that they want to see the project more aligned with the urban design guidelines. And it's absolutely within the board's discretion to refer back to staff so the developers can meet more of what the board wants to see as far as it fits, meets the urban design guidelines. Having a sidewalk, access to the restaurant from Element Way, orientating the building. I know that wasn't specifically requested, but if that was up for debate tonight from the Village Board to orientate the building differently, that could have been stated. And that's an absolute directive from the board to the staff to discuss with the developers so it could meet more aligned, be more aligned with urban design guidelines. Obviously, that, the orientation wasn't discussed, but what was stated on the record, I think, is pretty sound as to what the directive is from staff to meet with the developers about.
As long as there's a specific set of guidelines that you're asking us to modify
Right. So staff's not going to come with an open-ended, all right, let's discuss to see what the board's going to want. We established access to the restaurant from Element Way, curb cut on Oneida, bike parking. What's in the record now is what's being, what's the directive from staff to meet with the developers about to, I know you said you used tweak, but I would say modify the site plan to be more along the lines with the urban design guidelines.
Okay, it seemed to me to be much more open-ended, like there wasn't a definitive set of specific criteria. And what really concerned me was the, the concept of going back to the PUD because we're beyond that.
Okay.
Okay. So that, you know, we would ask the board to consider the timing, that another 30 days is a big impact on my client so that it isn't just, you know, these have to be very specific items and very, be considered important enough to have to send it back for another 30 days. And, and like I said, we're here to answer any questions, so if there are specific questions about something from a design standpoint, the designers are here. We can, we can deal with it right now.
Certainly, we, I think the board appreciates that. From my take, obviously respectfully, my take on it, I think staff's take on it is we have a clear set of directive, what to do specifically according to what's been established in the record. Obviously, your secondary, your request is to have this move forward tonight. Now, obviously, the board's going to have discretion and decide that
Okay.
On the motion, so that's obviously up to the board if they want to
Okay, just wanted to say our, give our position.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, is anybody online would like to make any, whoop, I'm sorry. Is there anybody online that would like to make any comments?
Yes, Slindy.
Okay. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Bert Slindy. I'm representing the Element Apartments, 746 Element Way. We feel that there are some lax applications of the ordinance as we understood it. We feel that despite Gary's concern and comment that we have to listen to the residents, there's probably 100 residents coming here that have absolutely no voice as it pertains to the placement of the building. They're not here. Our building is under construction. The view corridors that we have have absolutely been decimated by the placement of this, and it will affect the rentalability of that building, which ultimately affects a lot of other variables that the village is involved in as we are. But we're here speaking for the future of our residents that are hopefully coming. And one of the biggest elements of our offering is that priceless view of Lambo Field, the view corridor. And had we understood that the ordinances were casual, as we were led to believe they weren't casual, they were in place, we would have never taken on the level of depth, cost, and layout that we put before you. And I don't look at this as some kind of legal environment here to discuss. Our attorney, Matt Fleming, is here. I don't think it's an appropriate spot to hash this out, but we're happy to because we have a difference of opinion, and it's a strong one.
Yeah, and I would just like to add, you know, there's been comments made about the residents on Oneida Street, and I would second Bert's comments. I mean, we have a slew of people that are going to be living here in our building, hopefully. And they are expecting that Lambo view, and they expect to pay for that Lambo view. And when we aren't able to produce that, you know, a year or two into them living in that property, that'll affect our financial pro forma and that'll affect our ability to provide, an ability to meet the agreements that we've had on the table due to projections that we all worked to understand. So we're just asking that some credence give to that and credence give to, you know, the zoning requirements that we understood them to be. So I don't have anything more to add, and thanks for listening to us tonight, the best you can.
We, we do appreciate it.
Okay.
I don't know if Matt Fleming has something to say, but.
Yeah, if I may, I, I won't certainly get into too much legal debate here, and I, I think the reasons behind our protest have been eloquently stated. I would just say, I, I, I think if you really look at the urban design guidelines and the regulations that are in place to further those goals, I, I think this plan requires quite a bit more than a few tweaks and, and moving bike racks. And I know from at least the discussion that, this far, it does not appear to be the direction the Village Board is looking to go, but again, I would strongly encourage a, a more deeper dive into those design guidelines and get this project much more in conformity with them. Thanks.
Thank you. Did anybody in the audience have anything more to add to this? If you'd state your name and address for the record, please?
Jeff Van Beaver, 2145 South Oneida Street.
Alex Paternos, 1220 East Fillmore Avenue. We heard the staff's comments tonight, or Village Board's comment tonight, and we have no issue making any of the changes that were suggested. So I would ask that we could get approval with conditions that we make the tweaks that were talked about tonight, and you could simply just hold up the building permit until we make all those tweaks. We have no issues with anything that was asked of us tonight.
Tracy, I, I hear what you're saying, and we appreciate that. Everything you said, every concern you had, as Alex said, we would address it and change it on a conditional. We would, we would work to make that happen for sure. And as, as, as we have talked and as our counsel had mentioned, it is a timeline that we're on. And so we, we really want to be able to work together. I'm hometown, we're going to do everything it takes to make this work and be a good neighbor, please the village, and, and all the design guidelines that have to be met. We will do that. We would ask for conditional tonight.
Does anybody have any other comments? I have no.
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
Yep, I do. Yeah, this is Jeff Gillis.
Okay.
I am a partner with the Slindys, 4906 Femrite Drive, Madison. I'm a partner and also the contractor. And the only comment I have to make, the village should never, or any municipality should never cave in to the developer saying we are on a timeline that we need to meet. The village should not care what the developer's timeline is. They need to do what is right for the village. And don't let the developer say we are on a tight timeline. Don't let them play that game on you. That's all I have to say. And there's a lot that needs to be looked at, that should be looked at from the village's point of view on, on, on this project. It's not like we are against it, but it, it, it needs more than tweaks, it needs to be reevaluated. So that's just, just a comment I want to make. I, when I hear that the developer's attorney and the developer talk about we, we need conditional approval, we need to be on a timeline, that, I hope, I hope the village doesn't fall into that game. That's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
I think every one of us on this Village Board has been contacted, has information on this. Timeline has never been brought up at all in any of our conversations.
I'm not, I'm not saying
We are doing this
I'm not saying it has been, but the developer's trying to shove it down your throat right now. That's all I'm saying.
That's his talk. That's his talk. It has not been brought up from this table here.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not saying it hasn't been. I'm just saying, I've listened to the developer, what he's saying. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, Madam President, if I may, if, if there's no other comment to be provided from the floor, I would recommend closing the floor, and then you can deliberate then as the board and others can, can hear that deliberation.
Motion to close the floor.
Second. Motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. The floor is closed. Thank you. Tracy, you had some comment.
I was just going to say, obviously, I'm sure you folks want to work with us. My concern is, I think it needs, we need to take a step back, and that's what I said at the last meeting, and really look at this whole project and have staff work with you again. Bring it back a month later. I am not comfortable with approving this this evening, saying, okay, do this, 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 and this. I think there's too many things that we really need to look at, so I stand by the motion and would call the motion.
Okay, Chris, do you want to? Okay, the motion was to postpone the vote and have staff work with the developers to modify the site plan according to some of the issues that were discussed, the sidewalk placement, the driveway cut, the bike rack placement.
Make PUD, PUD and site plan review coordination, make sure those are coordinated.
Right. If I may, Madam President, for the record, there's been a lot of discussion about quote-unquote like tweaks.
Yes.
And then there's modifications. The, why don't we establish for the record clearly, clear directives, what the board wishes the staff to communicate with the developer about? What I, what I've had written down is access to the restaurant or from the first floor, at least from Element Way, the amount of access to Oneida Street, eliminating one of the curb cuts, some of the locations of bike parking, possibly amending the PUD to include that. And then Trustee Flukie, I think you had a couple more.
Pedestrian access from Element Way, a buffer for the parking along Oneida Street, and those were the ones that you missed.
Okay. Okay, everybody, that was the motion and the second. Does the staff understand those directives?
I will add one clarifying notation to Patrick's statement. I will add one clarifying notation to Patrick's statement of record. The access to the restaurant should be off of Oneida Street. There isn't access presently to the primary entrance off of Element, if you will. So just an additional public access from Oneida Street.
Okay. Does everybody understand that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. Got directions. Thank you. Okay. 12C, consider-discuss act on appeal of denied operator license Tammy Lapper. Chris?
So in the packet is the denial letter, the original application, and a letter from Tammy Lapper, along with letters from her probation and parole agent and Hy-Vee, her employer. Ms. Lapper was denied by the Ashwabandhan Department of Public Safety for being an convicted felon as per Guideline 1 in the operator license approval policy. At Public Works and Protection, the meeting, at that meeting, the vote was three to one. Ms. Lapper made it out like she would be here tonight, and I don't see her here or online, so...
Do you need a motion on that? All right, I'll make motion to deny her the license.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to deny the appeal of the operator license for Tammy Lapper. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carried. Thank you. 12D, consider-discuss act on resolution number R10-1-23, updating the village fee and permit schedule. Patrick?
So within the last few months, staff has gotten together to kind of look at the village fee schedule, to see if there's any modifications, adjustments that need to be made. Typically, when staff has assessed fees, inspections, et cetera, for example, like a tent fee, or a special event fee, or something along those lines, they'll refer to the village fee schedule. And looking at it, it just needed a lot of cleanups. There were a lot of departments that were assigned to the improper ordinance, improper fee. So a lot of the black that's on the Excel spreadsheet, the table that you see, there were modifications to that, but there were minor modifications in terms of which department is associated with that fee in that municipal code. The modifications in red, if it is struck through, obviously, that's eliminating itself from the fee schedule. If it's added, that is a request from the staff to add that. I sent this fee schedule out, as well as the permit schedule, which is attached to it, and the fire inspection schedule, also attached, to all departments to kind of look if any modifications need to be, and these were the ones that the staff thought were most pertinent as of right now. There aren't too many modifications. Despite that, I think the staff is, believes that this one uniform working copy pretty much just provides updates as of right now. If there are any significant changes, the staff will bring that back in the future, but as of right now, I think this is fine. Like I said, a lot of it just, it really needed a cleanup, and it'll be dispersed among staff. Every can kind of go off one clean working copy. Happy to answer questions on that.
Move to approve the resolution R10-1-23.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution R10-1-23, updating the village fee and permit schedule. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 12E, consider-discuss act on changes to village health insurance plan design.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. As indicated in your board packet, it is now that time of year where we begin to prep for open enrollment for our employees to enroll in our medical, dental, and vision benefit program with the village, and in your packet is a set of premium rates that are being proposed for the 2024 plan year. I will note, as it relates to the medical prescription drug benefit plan, village staff has received, as of today, the final numbers for what is called our stop-loss insurance. And as a result of those costs, we are able to hold the rates to 0% increase for next year, so that is good news for the village. Our dental rates, however, are proposed to increase by about 27% on the sheet, and that's just primarily because we've been holding our dental rates extremely low for the last several years because we have had a very, very healthy fund balance within that particular program. So we have drawn that fund balance down for two reasons. One, because we've held our rates low, but two, we've also used some fund balance to balance out our medical prescription drug benefit. So we are looking to increase dental rates to match the need to meet that demand. The vision renewal is a voluntary 100% employee cost, so those are the costs that they are for individuals that would care to enroll. With that being said, we are proposing no plan design changes to our medical benefit program. So we are a high deductible HSA eligible program. Deductibles would be $2,000 for individual members, $4,000 for family members, with an annual out-of-pocket max of $6,550 for individuals, and $13,100 for families. We are proposing, however, a premium increase for employees, so the employee contribution to premium. We are looking to increase that to 5% and 7.5%. The 5% would be for those employees that complete the HRA and health screening assessments. The 7.5% would be for those that do not complete those requirements. Our HRA is a participatory HRA, so all you have to do is participate. You don't need to achieve a certain score or value as it relates to that. Just participate in the program. Open enrollment will begin November 1st and will conclude around November 15th, and again, this plan year would go into effect January 1. So with that, I would ask for a motion from the board to approve the plan design.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the changes to the village health insurance plan design. Any other discussion, comments, concerns?
I have one quick question.
This spreadsheet here, Joel, is that their increase for the coming year?
That is correct. So the first page in that packet is, there's two tables on that, one with a 1.3% increase to the rate equivalent, and one with a 0% increase. The 1.3 was what we were estimating before we got our final numbers from stop-loss insurance. The 0% is what it will be because we had no changes there. The dental plan design, that 27% is the increase in the vision, is what the premium would be for voluntary enrollments. So correct, yes. And I believe Tracy had a question as well.
Yeah, one quick question. I understand this is for approval of just the health plan. Talking to Greg, I noticed the dental went up quite a bit. And it sounds like you're going to stay with 10%, is it, for dental?
Correct.
But increasing the cost of it.
Correct.
But stay with the same percentage for, so then we don't have to prove anything because you're going to still stay with the 10%.
Correct.
But their input will be just a little higher because the cost will be higher. Is that correct?
Correct. So on the medical prescription drug benefit, again, because it's a high deductible health plan, medical and prescription is bundled, the employee contribution is 5 and 7.5%, depending on participation in the HRA. On the dental side, it has been and will continue to be a 90-10 match. And then on the vision program, it's 100% employee contribution.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 12F, discussion on possible amendments to Chapter 6 Businesses, Article 13, Licensing of Short-Term Rentals of the Village of Ashwabandham Unit Code. Joel?
Thank you, Madam President. This item was placed on the agenda at the request of trustee service. This is being brought forward for discussion only because there is no formal proposal or amendments to be made at this evening's meeting. However, certainly, the board can discuss and direct staff to bring something back to a future meeting. As you recall, I believe it was last month, or maybe it was the month prior, we forwarded you the results of our focus groups and the feedback that we received from our licensed operators. And so the board did receive and place on file by formal action that document. So with that, I guess if there are any proposed changes that the board would like to discuss and maybe direct staff to draft, we'd be, you know, happy to entertain those at this time.
Yeah, I wanted this on the agenda because at the September meeting, the report about the focus groups indicated that the majority of the people who attended those focus group meetings, short-term rental owners, their concerns would have been handled if we had grandfathered them under the prior rules, prior to us amending our ordinance. And I know, I remember Chris had some concerns when we went through that whole process and other people on the board, because it felt like, you know, we had one set of rules, and they purchased these properties and put money into it, and then we changed the rules, and it just didn't feel right. So I wanted to get it back on the agenda just to talk about it and see how the board feels about possibly extending, I mean, they're grandfathered for a year now, so... I mean, I think we have some time to talk about it, but I think we could, I guess I just want to see how the group feels about grandfathering them permanently.
Well, I will tell you, Kelly, Gary and I were at the conference this week, last week, and in the large community group discussion at the end of the day, and the small community group discussion at the end of the day, short-term rental was a big discussion. And it was brought up a lot about, there's a lot of different places that are starting to put different, really strict regulations. Somebody forwarded me something from New York. In New York, if you rent your home or apartment out, you have to be there when the people are renting. So it's kind of like having your mother-in-law come and live with you for a weekend. So I don't know, you know, the ordinance hasn't been in place that long, so we'd have basically until next year to discuss it if we wanted to. So I don't know what you want to direct staff. I don't...
I mean, I, yeah, we did kind of change, people that bought property and that, yes, I agree with that. I actually would like to see for anybody that's a new short-term rental, I'd actually like to see it changed more to, yeah, you got to live in the house. It has to be your residence. I don't know that you have to live in the house, but it has to be your residence.
I think Madison has that.
Yeah, I would like to actually see us go that way for the new ones even more, actually make it more restrictive. And then maybe, you know, maybe we tweak and back off on the, and grandfather in the ones that had already purchased prior to that. It probably would be worthwhile looking at that again. I know you've looked at it so much. It gets a little old. But I think it's a good thing to go back and take another look at.
You know, that would have to be, we'd have to make an agenda item so that we could actually discuss this.
Yeah. Yeah, I...
I don't know when we want to do, I mean, the holidays are coming. I don't know when we want to do this.
Maybe we do it after the holidays type of thing.
I would say even mid-next year, revisit it and let it go for a little while and see how it works out for this packer season.
I agree 100%.
I don't think, we just did this, and now, exactly, we're literally just...
Let's get some more information.
Absolutely. Let's just let it go. Let's see how all the other municipalities go. I mean, yeah, definitely revisit it, but let's talk like June, July.
Yep.
Isn't the next...
That might be a little late, but because I think it expires July.
Oh, later, sorry.
Yeah.
Spring.
April, May.
So we'd have to do it earlier if we want to do it at our next licensing period. My question on it is, and I probably asked this before, and I apologize if I did, but how many are grandfathered, I mean, how many short-term rentals are we talking about that if we would say, okay, these, is it 80, is it 20, we'll be able to have this the way it was and will grandfather them forever? Because I think that's a big part of it, if it's not, you know, 100 or whatever. So I think that's something we need to know. The other thing I would like staff to look at, and maybe you did with all this, but I think our state legislators also need to get working on a short-term rental, and we need to start approaching them, and maybe the league is doing that.
Yeah.
Because they have our hands tied in a lot of ways that we cannot do a lot to make this a better situation. I mean, you read articles all the time about other states requiring this, 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 this. We can't do any of that because the state has our hands tied. So I think that's a big factor in it as well, for us to start reaching out to our state legislators and seeing what they can do with it.
I've had conversations with both of our legislators that represent us, so I will continue to have those.
Good.
And because they, there was one community in the large community group that he thought that their community had 17 short-term rentals, and they hired a software to monitor it. They had over 250.
Oh, we count.
So...
I know our goal was to slow down the, you know, proliferation of new short-term rentals, and I think that worked. I mean, there have not been a lot...
I don't know about that. I live in that area, and I represent that area where most of them are. I'll tell you what, I see too many homes being torn apart, and they are questionable on what they're going to be. But I don't even like driving down the street anymore because I see it all the time. And I, you know, I don't think we're going to get license with, the way we're going right now, I don't know how they can do it, but I guess it's none of my business and how they want to spend their money, but you know, if you do, I guess what I'm trying to get to, there's one fellow I know quite well. He's had one for a while, and he does a lot of parking cars and whatever, but he told me after owning this home for a number of years, he's finally making a little money to put in his pocket. Now, you tell me a guy that spent $750,000 on remodeling something to make it work, where is the return? So the tighter we get our restrictions, the better off we're going to be to stop it completely.
Okay, so does, do you want to direct staff?
Aaron has probably a number, I'm guessing, maybe of an existing license count.
So we currently have 63 licensed, village licensed for the 2023-2024 licensing period. That, again, that does not count those that rent for 10 or fewer nights per year because they only need the Brown County license. So there are 63 with a village license currently on the record.
Are those the ones then that are all grandfathered or were grandfathered this year?
No, no, there are definitely new ones in there as well.
Okay.
I don't have an actual number of those that are grandfathered. I'd have to look that up.
There's many of the ones that were licensed that did not renew their license July 1.
What is 40 ringing a bell? Aaron?
Yeah, just real quickly, just so the board is kind of firm understanding, so existing licenses as of July 1, 2023, were given an exception from the 180-day consecutive clause within the ordinance. And that is maintained beyond just even the first year. So that was a provision that was included by the board. So that, unless the board amends its ordinance again, that exclusion, if you will, is present. The area of concern that we heard from the focus groups is there is the six-night or seven consecutive day requirement for new licenses. So those licenses that were licensed as of June 30, 2023, in good standing, have one year to continue to rent it for fewer than six nights or seven consecutive days. That exception expires July 1, 2024. So that is really the concern that we heard from the existing licenses is that, yeah, it's great for one year. We have that provision. We would like to see that kind of exception to us continue in perpetuity like the 180-day provision. As far as other changes go, you know, we did add the component that if individuals want to rent fewer than six consecutive nights or seven consecutive days, it must be owner occupied. And through the licensing provision or the process, we identify through their application whether it's considered their primary residence. We would, as staff, need to evaluate if we could add further restrictions beyond that. I think we can regulate for anything less than six consecutive nights or seven consecutive days. I don't know that we could add that requirement for anything beyond that. So just bear in mind that we would have to, we would have to look at that a little bit more in earnest. We don't know.
I guess I would like to have that looked at then, so we know what our...
I guess I would like to have that looked at then, so we know what our possibilities are. The concern I see for the short-term rental people is if we wait until April to look at it again, they're booking already for that period. You know, how are they going to know how, can they book for less than six, you know, less than six nights or not?
Yeah, so maybe look at it early in the year, like January, February, or something, so we can.
Right.
I'm getting calls already for '25.
I know there are people here who.
Draft.
Are concerned about it. Can we open the floor and hear from them, or?
Can I ask one question quick? I know some states are no longer allowing, or even cities, Airbnb at all, or VBR. Is that something that could be done in Wisconsin, or in our community?
I don't necessarily know about the community. I would suggest they come from the state itself, if they're going to restrict any kind of those marketplace rentals. Because I know that's optimal for short-term rentals to actually rent by. I think staff would have to look into that if Ashwabnam or any community can do that by themselves. Because now you're regulating which marketplace can advertise and rent, and which can't. So, I would suggest that that be deferred to the state. But something to look into, not a bad idea. It'd probably be a little bit better if the state statute mandated that the marketplace rentals report to the municipalities themselves, or the county, the county does it. But I think that could be applied through the state statute. Certainly can, just as hotels do. But as far as determining who can and can't advertise, I'm kind of hard-pressed to say that they can't. One thing I was going to just comment on, there was eligible licensees from last year that could have the grandfather clause. That does expire currently as in code. However, keep in mind, though, if there's any kind of change of ownership, a transfer, or sale, that also goes away, that you can carry that on. But also, if that, those eligible licenses don't renew into this year, they also lose that grandfather clause as well. So, I don't know how many we had last year that might be eligible this year, but if they don't get their license, then it's.
Then it's gone. That'd be helpful to know, too, that number.
Yeah.
When we, when the staff looks at it, let us know, like, it might only be 40.
So, maybe look at it and bring it back in January?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'll have staff look at it.
Yeah, second.
We have a motion and a second to open the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay. Chris, I'm sorry, what?
I think we understand what the concerns are of the short-term.
I do agree, but we opened the floor, so. I agree. Chris was in all.
My name's John Calowards, 2060 Casner. A couple things. I'm a numbers guy. And a couple things that stand out to me a little bit are, when I was here for the last meeting, I heard a lot of different things about Airbnbs that were, this is not correct, okay? One of the things is we're getting rid of the neighborhoods, okay? Everybody's building and building, or ripping down these houses, we're renewing them, and we're fixing them up, and they're selling for a lot more, so on and so forth. So, I looked up on the website, and 52 homes were lost because of the Green Bay Packers, okay? And I think somebody up here said, well, when they buy them, we don't have, we can't do anything about it. My question is, are you going to have them zoned residential, or are you going to switch them over to commercial? Because one of the things that I've heard constantly from you guys are, we're losing our houses to younger kids, or we want younger people in here to sustain the school district, okay? If you're going to, if you're going to change the zoning of 52 residential houses to commercial for the Green Bay Packers, I don't think that's right. I don't think it's right, okay? That's just my opinion. One of the, the lady that was here, the last meeting, she said, I had somebody that went to the bathroom in my yard, or whatever, and that was a big thing. And so, I looked at, and I did an open records request. I looked at my property. One police call in four years was a parking violation, somebody parked out on the street. The guy next to me, at 2050 Casner, there was 10 police calls. Right here they are, 10 police calls. My neighbor, okay? Drugs. I think at the last meeting, they surrounded with a SWAT team, they told me to leave the house. And yet, we're blaming, we're saying my house isn't clean, and that we're causing a lot of the problems. The guy across the street, 2071 Casner, 12 police calls, weapons, drugs, he died of an overdose.
Are those residents you're talking about?
What's that?
Are those residents?
Yes, the residents, and they're not Airbnb.
Okay.
They're not Airbnbs.
They're not Airbnbs. That's all I.
Okay. Here's the guy's house across the street. I wouldn't, I hate looking at the thing. It's terrible. I would rather have an Airbnb, like the guy next to him, I never see the guy, or he's not an Airbnb, he lives out of town. I've never even talked to him. House is immaculate. This is the house that I have. And not only that, it fails to show the van that's always parked out on the street with a trailer and with a bunch of junk. Every day is parked out there. And he has the right to park in public, so you can't say anything about that. So, all these misconceptions about how we're such a bad, you know, we have all these police calls. If we have all these police calls, take away our license. You guys aren't, I mean, that, or why don't you make these people, force them out of their houses, then? I don't get that. And here's another number. From July 1 to the end of September, here's the number of nights that I rented my house. One night, one night, five nights, one night, 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, 3. You tell me how I'm going to actually show profit by trying to rent it out for seven nights? There's nobody coming to Green Bay for seven nights, okay? Maybe the draft, okay? And I know.
Is that this year, Mr. Calowards?
What's that?
I, just for the record, was that this year that you rented those?
Yeah, because this is the form that I filled out, because you guys are requiring it, which I did, okay? And I met with a trustee, there's a guy that's doing Airbnb, and every time somebody questions on it, he says, I don't rent it out for more than 10 nights. You guys aren't doing anything about it. I'm paying $500, I'm doing everything in compliance. All I'm asking for is to get grandfathered in. I have one house, okay? That was kind of my retirement. 40, and I know we had the numbers here, and I know I met with Patrick and Aaron, and we had talked, we had a good discussion on it. And I think you guys did this backwards. I mean, we should have probably had a discussion group before. We probably should have the Realtors Association come up. We should have probably had maybe an attorney, and had a discussion group, instead of just, okay, let's vote on it, and now, let's have a discussion group now. That, we should have probably flip-flopped that. Because now it's going to be hard to try to get anything done with this. I believe there's 42 people that would be grandfathered in. If, by my calculations and what I've been checking on through the village, the lady that's, I forgot her name, I email her so much, but I, I've been talking to her. And at one time this summer, about two months ago, there was only 42 people. So, I'm asking is, grandfather 42 houses in. Now, remember, if I sell my house, I can't give it to anybody. It's over. People that are going to go ahead, and you can't transfer it, we already made that, that point true, you can't transfer it over, okay? And as far as, okay, let's wait till next year. I mean, I had people asking for a wedding party for next year already. I can't, they want it for three nights, I can't.
So, I have a question, Mr. Calowards, just for the record. Is this your personal home that you live in?
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's one down the street, three blocks, three houses away. And I watch it like a hawk.
Okay.
And my neighbors absolutely love that I'm there. I was talking to them today again, and they love the improvements. I do favors for them, everything. But, you know, and I know you had said, well, they're really strict in New York, you can't even do it. Do you know that this law is more strict than Door County? And when you go to Door County, you're staying there for seven nights. You're not staying there for a Packer weekend. I mean, there's other things you can do. I mean, if anything, I mean, grandfather us, obviously, that'd be the best thing, okay? But secondly, why won't you, for the Packer season, make an exemption? I mean, that's more of our revenue.
Okay, well, this is a conversation, though, that's probably going to go into when we discuss the short-term rental ordinance. So, I'm probably going to say that we're going to close the floor, because otherwise, it's just going to keep going. And this is not an agenda item for us to discuss tonight. So, okay. I need a motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor.
Second. Motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so, pretty much we'll bring this back. Staff will bring it back in January.
Sure. I think this is an information-only item. I think staff has direction of what to, I guess, review, look for, and when to bring it back.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Okay, any items for next agenda? If you have any, give the village hall a call. 14 closed-session items. During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabnam may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 and B, and, yep, that's it. The item listed in B. I need a motion going to closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call.
President Kardowski?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Atkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal?
Yes.
Trustee Service?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
And Trustee Flukie?
Yes.
This conference is no longer being.